Please.
What's the big topic?
Grants.
Thank you. Present for, for the board are Martha Azarizik, Katie Erickson, Sally Heiser, and Sharon Huxley. Lars Demander and John Gubowski sent their regrets, but this, we will catch up with them later at a different time. We have very few. We also have Jen Capasso and Leslie Bautch-Galuppi here as resource people because they do, they manage nearly everything that goes on with grants. So, the first thing on our agenda is public comments. So, there are no members of the public physically present. So if anyone online would like to speak, please raise your hand and Jen will let you speak. We need your name and address.
I'm just taking notes.
I think we're good because we're recording and it's a mostly discussion. You're both taking notes? Did anybody raise their hand?
No, we're good.
We have no public comment?
Hi.
Oh.
Welcome.
Welcome. Okay, so we are in our public comment portion of the meeting before we begin the rest of it. If you would like to make some comment, then
I would.
Then good. Give us, please, your name. One thing, your name and address for our records.
Tim Ahern, H. Green Hill Road.
Okay, now.
My questions are about the subsidizing of the after-school program.
That is not.
When's that meeting?
Two weeks ago. There is a Board of Finance meeting next Tuesday. Okay, there's a Board of Finance meeting next Tuesday.
Okay. So that's not what this is for?
No, this is about grants, about creating a grant committee to find.
Are there minutes from that last meeting?
Yes. I think so. They should be. You know, they might not be because they haven't been reviewed by the board yet. And they would be published next, no later than next Monday, probably this Friday, because the meeting is on Tuesday. So that we, we like to have them to review over the weekend. Okay.
Thanks.
All right, is there anything else we can do for you? I'm sorry.
I submit my questions, it would be easier.
You can certainly do that because then we'll have them in front of us at the, the meeting. But you, are you going to come to the meeting also?
I wish I could have made the last one. My job works. It's a crapier weather out, and then when I come up to the rate, you're late now. I usually go home from there, so I want to get there on time. That didn't work.
I'm sorry.
That's okay.
Our, our meeting, if you plan to attend, we, all of our meetings are, are virtual.
Okay.
But our regular meeting, we started six thirty.
Perfect.
And that's when the public comment would be.
Great.
And we would love to have your questions in writing ahead of time so that if we need to do some research, we can.
Right.
But I have a feeling we already have all the information.
I guess, and you do. I'm just. The minutes would have the answers, but it didn't have those.
Can you provide him with?
Yeah, I can, I can make, I can make sure that the draft minutes get online tomorrow.
Yeah. And there's also that, that worksheet that we work from with the, with the budget lines. It would probably make it easier to put your questions together.
Thank you very much.
All right, are you going to email Leslie? Or is Leslie going to, this is, this is Leslie Bautch-Galuppi, she's our finance director.
Sure. I can give you my email if it helps. It's team, T.E.A.M., Ahern, A.H.E.A.R.N. at A.T.T. dot net. And mine's Tim.
Thank you very much.
All right, have a good night.
Okay, so my, my suggestion, the way I would like to do this is have first Jen, who is kind of involved in all the stages, give us a quick, as quick as possible, although it's not really quick, rundown on how the grant processes have worked so far. Because we've had, we've had things that we knew in advance. We've had things come up that we had to turn around in the day. We've had things that were planned a year in advance. There've been all kinds of things. And we've had things that didn't make it all the way because they weren't reviewed, lots of stuff. And then have Leslie fill us in on how that part has worked. I'm just thinking that will make it, it will be quicker in terms of what questions we ask and what we want to do from there. Is that, that's okay?
Okay.
Jen, you're on.
So typically, first of all, the role kind of came along because we were getting a little bit more grants than, you know, a couple thousand dollars here. Kind of floated through the finance office and then went into a department. We were getting larger grants. We also had an issue, if anybody remembered the airport grant, that just wasn't necessarily appropriately handled. And so one of the things when I first came on was kind of have to go through all of that, figure out exactly, the state actually said that we owed them thirty thousand dollars and come to find out they actually owed us a hundred and forty-four thousand dollars. So with going through all of the paperwork, we ended up kind of filling that in. So based off of that, it kind of fell into my lap of, well, why don't you handle the grants? So it was never really a solidified, like, this is something that you should be doing. It was just kind of like, okay, well, could you handle the little pieces that come your way? Then the grants started getting bigger than that. Now we have million-dollar grants. So they, they are growing, we are getting more grants. And with that, obviously, comes a lot more paperwork. So how the process normally works is currently is something will happen where either, normally it's Rosa Delora's office, Murphy's office, Blumenthal, something of that nature. Or I happen to see something that came in through either SCROG or CCM or some other organizations, and there's opportunities there to apply for a grant. And then we kind of scramble. And everybody just says, okay, what do we have? And we put together some type of project to fill these grants because we don't want to lose that money, right? And we do have projects that need to be done, but they're not necessarily done prior to. They're not vetted as far as, you know, this is what we want to do in the next five years. If a grant happens to come in, this is what we want to do. It's a grant comes in and then we say, what do we have? And so we normally only have like a two-weekly, like, lead time between the time that we find out about the grants to when it has to be submitted. And if anybody's ever worked in grants, that is such a small amount of time for a lot of the paperwork that they're asking for. For example, water testing, soil testing, whether or not there's inland wetlands, having to go through the state through deep, trying to see if it's appropriate to be building there or not building there, or whatever the case may be. So you're trying to kind of, I thank God I have some partners now where I can tap into those resources. But it is something that is a larger project. So then, once we have the grants that we want to submit, most of the time, it kind of comes to me and I, I put them together. And so I take my knowledge of what I know and the conversations that I had with the folks that I talk to normally at facilities. And I compile the data enough to submit something for that grant. We get it, and then it gets placed somewhere. So like, for example, our federal grant, it went through Rosa Delora's office and, and then it landed in HUD. It is not a HUD grant. I mean, it is a HUD grant because that's what it's going through. But the project itself is not really HUD-worthy. So now it's been a real bear for us to navigate this, this platform that is made for, you know, the lower-income housing or something that would have to do with like building community center and how many children are involved and things like that, that that's not what we're doing. So you're navigating systems that weren't necessarily applicable to the money that, that you end up getting. And then you have quarterly reporting that's due, and then the, the closeouts. A lot of the times, they, they have additional information before you get the grant that you need to fill out. They work with us because they're my municipality. But most of the time, they're saying, okay, well, you know what, we'll give it to you. But then you have to do all these pieces in order to get the money. And, and so there really is, for one person to be doing multiple grants is, 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 it's a full-time job, just that. And so we, and my, my perspective on it is that the town is missing out on some grants because these are the ones that come to us. These aren't ones that, you know, are being searched for, looked for, what have you. They're the ones that kind of land in our plate and then I take them on. Once in a while, like I said, I happen to find one. Not where I, somebody I talked to said, oh, I can't believe you haven't applied for blah, blah, blah. And then I, I kind of go out there. But that's the process that we have at the moment. But it is way too big for one person to be handling, just a million-dollar grant. I will tell you, I tapped into some folks at SCROG that I happened to have networked with several years ago. And they're like, well, where's your team? And I'm like, what team? Like, it's my, I'm the team. We need to get this done. And so they're like, that's crazy. Like, you need a full team. Like, you shouldn't be doing it yourself, even from like a, just the checks and balances nature. Like, there should be somebody else that's checking your numbers, that's putting it through. And then you shouldn't be handling work that goes in for reimbursement if you were the one that actually applied for the grant and had your hands in, in that piece. So they're definitely, it would be very helpful if there was a committee that, that's that. Somebody that, you know, wants that gets applied for, we get the grant, they can take a look at it. You know, multiple I signatures, we can have more of, you know, policies and procedures in place for that so that we know what we're looking for. It would help us vet projects prior to, so we can have some actual shovel-ready projects. So when they come, come through, you know, we actually know what we're looking for instead of kind of scrambling to just fill in a dollar amount. But that's, that's where we are right now. I'm happy to answer any questions that you guys might have out of that.
You haven't even mentioned all the, the steep grants, LOSES.
Those are steep grants, right. But then LOSES kind of falls in the gray area there because LOSES we have to apply for. We get the funds through finance, so I don't really touch those.
Leslie does, but those, they changed the rules on those, just like they did with the ARPA.
And that goes to policy and procedures too. So like, last year's steep grant isn't the same steep grant, right? It's through the same programming, but last year's steep grant went through DOT. This year, it's going through a community effort. And so it's different, it's a different policy for each grant. And so you have to kind of work each contract differently depending on, you know, what, what you got the, the money for, what you're receiving the money for. And so, and that, that in itself, like I said, if one person's looking at that, it's very easy to miss, you know, certain like steps along the way, and now you're backtracking or holding up a process. So it's better to have multiple eyes on these things.
That's great. Well, as far as the fu, the funding and the finances are concerned, the grants that we receive the money upfront for, first, they're easier because we have the cash in hand. Then I'll eat, I mean, and so that way, we just work down the dollar amount so there's no money left. The ones where we have to get reimbursed are more cumbersome because we have to submit paperwork on a quarterly basis in order to get back what we spent. And then the steep grant that, the active steep grant that we have right now was for six hundred and three thousand dollars. We spent two hundred and fifty-seven. We're waiting on the state payment of two hundred and one to reimburse the eighty percent of what was spent. So even though we appropriate funds from the general fund to fill in the percentages, we're still operating at a cash deficit on most of the grants because we have to front the money. It's not that we don't have the money to front, but we have to front the money on most of the grant projects that we work with. Except for the way that LOSES is now structured, that we get the money upfront and we can use that money then on any eligible program, you know, project within that. And I do review all of the documents before we submit them for reimbursement. I mean, the Jen, the bookkeeper in my office is very detail-oriented. She is very specific when she cuts checks for everything. They're clearly marked, clearly labeled. We know where everything goes. So we review everything that we spent versus the budget. Then we create the necessary quarterly reports to submit for payment. And then you sit and wait. Sometimes you get turnaround in thirty days, sometimes it's sixty, a hundred, you know. You don't know. It could be a hundred and twenty days before, or a hundred and eighty days before you're reimbursed. You just never know.
How long have we been waiting for the Delora one?
Well, HUD is, that's the HUD grant, so that one is, is, is partial, partial, well, it's, it's not so much that, so we're waiting. So the problem is that it's not that, so the way it kind of worked out was originally the money was spent because we had gotten an okay from Delora's side. But HUD had taken it over and they had more requirements. And so we had already started spending some funds and then they told us we couldn't spend any money until they okayed it. And then we had to get more paperwork from the state as far as making sure that there was nothing that was environmentally, non-environmental impact. And, and so we had to wait for that. And then the portal came into play. And we don't, our, our, our grant does not match that portal. And so every time something gets submitted, they're kicking it back and saying, no, we need you to fill in, you know, different dynamics. Or we need you to fill in, you know, different specs. So now I've written full narratives of where the money came from and why we need to put it here. And there's no spot to put the money. And so we're still waiting for them to okay our action plan for us to get the reimbursement from the first, lack of a better term, like tranche from our side so we can spend more money. So we're kind of in this weird space right now that I can't seem to get the approval for them to want to reimburse us.
And we, and we used everything that the town meeting gave us because I think they told us we could spend up to two hundred and fifty.
We spent two hundred and thirty-six. And the next piece is going to expend more than what is left. So I told Dawn. That's fine.
Right. And then on the steep side, the steep grant, we were all set. And actually, I just had an email from the architect today saying where we are. Because the steep grant has changed where we used to be able to, once we had approved, as long as we went out for bid, we were good. Now they, the, the state wants to regulate how the bids go out and what the bids look like. So before you can go out for bid, you have to send it back to the state. They have to review it and then you can go out for bid. And we're still waiting for them. So the last one I sent out was September eleventh. And I actually emailed them yesterday asking them, because they said no more than two weeks, but, you know, so we're still waiting on that end. So, and so that's us just waiting to go out for bid to continue to do the project.
So that's where we are. And we also have, we're also in this situation where we have had the public asking for other things, except not in a, in an organized way because we don't have an organized way to get that information. We've been addressing, as Jen said, when, when it comes up, when we see the grant, we've, we've been applying for them. And but you have to have that idea before you can apply, or you have to know there's need. So that's part of what we want to do here, right?
And some of it as well, if I can add too, is like, for example, the FEMA grant that we applied for, for the, the lodge. That was something where you, I mean, you always almost have to give twenty percent. So whatever, then they'll be like, here's a million dollars. But you have to have twenty percent of that to also, the town has to be willing to participate in that. And so when you don't have funds behind it, it's hard. So one of the options was to send the grant, and it was like, well, the higher chance of you getting it, if you're willing to do thirty-five or forty percent, and we'll give you this much amount of money. Or you can take your, your chances and go in at twenty percent and we'll put you in this kind of pool, which is a less, you know, especially small town and things like that, you're less to get, less chance of getting it. And so because we don't have the funds to back it right now, it had to go into the larger pool, which gives us less of a chance of, of acquiring that grant. But that's a conversation to be out of.
The town meeting process.
Right.
Right. It's where then we get, we get the feedback that there were other things people would like. So anyway.
Well, that does raise the point. On having a list of projects that could be grant-worthy, but knowing how much is the town willing to put in for it? You know, a project that's going to cost seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Well, how much of that do you think the town should have, you know, are you willing to have the town pay for? Because, you know, if it's a, the, the lodge project, if we submitted it through FEMA, there was a greater, because it was an emergency structure, there was a greater likelihood of it being approved through FEMA. But I think it was like a one-point-two-million-dollar project. We'd have to fund fifty percent of that. And I'm not sure that's something the town would want to spend six hundred thousand dollars for.
It needs to get, well, you can make it bigger.
If I may, I just have some thoughts. Because you guys talked about like three different, a lot of them, three different things, right? You know, there's the strategic planning, which I think the two of you were just talking about, which is the identification of project, sort of focusing on the community need, the justification, the impact, the benefit, total cost of the project, and really how many residents it'll help. Like, sort of like, taking all these great ideas and putting it into sort of conceptual overview, right? Like, I think that's something that's easily within the scope of what a grant committee is supposed to do, like. And we can talk about who this committee's going to be and what those experts are and what we'll do in the group. I also think they could actually search out the grant, and that's something that you mentioned as well. They could actively looking, you know, in grant databases that, I don't know, searching out possible ways to fill these projects. And but the, the other part is the administration of the grants, which is, which is filling up a lot of your time, Jen. And I don't know how much a grant committee could help with that. I don't, I don't know, maybe, maybe they can, maybe they can't.
So the, the pieces, well, first of all, if I ever get an assistant, that would be helpful with that. So we can save some of the time. But for the committee here, I think the helpful piece is when you're applying for a grant, there are certain ways that you apply for a grant.
Okay.
And there's certain language that you need to use depending on what you're looking for. And a lot of the times, when I'm putting the grant together, it's just me. Like, no one necessarily even, like, proofreading my, my grants when I send them out. So the committee would be helpful as far as, you know, what type of language are we using? What type of impact are we trying to make? Is it, is it an emotional impact? Is it a financial impact? What type of, you know, is it, is it community, community building? You know, because when it's just you and you sometimes are getting creative with your narrative, you know, you don't want to get off track, right? You want to make sure that you're very succinct and you're very precise when you're sending these things in because they're mixed in with a ton of other grants. And so it would be really nice to have someone take a look of that, look at that, or few people to take a look at that and give ideas, feedback. When I'm lucky, there are people at SCROG that, you know, like, we do the trip grants. There are some people that we have that are willing to look at it and say, okay, listen, we, we deal with these types of grants. Here's what you, I would take out and what I would add. You know, and it kind of helps us with that process. But a lot of times it's not, and we have six days to put it together. You know, like, I wrote the, the Delora one over the weekend. I found out on a Friday and it was due on Monday. And so I just did it over the weekend. You know, and luckily, it was already a project that, you know, we, we had already discussed in a previous grant. But had that not been the case, that money would have been gone because we didn't have a project.
Yeah, I think the, what the whole idea of project management through identification right through, I, I think probably feedback, the feedback will, not the actual administration, but, but the rest of it is something that a committee ought to be able to do.
I can understand that, too. The grant writer piece, I, I think there's got, there's got to be some expertise.
What I, one of the things I, I'm worried about is, or concerned about is that there, some things have a very short turnaround period. Some things are like a middle, some things have to already be approved by the town before you can apply. You know, there are all these different tiers that have to be written and identified and, and differently, because I don't think we've had any two that worked the same way. You know, in terms of, other than ARPA, by the time, by the time we were reviewing them, we had a pretty good idea of what they were going to be, but unfortunately, they're gone. I don't know how, I guess I want to see us try to come up with a committee that can do a lot of front-end work identifying projects, not necessarily the ones that are the infrastructure ones that we, we are aware of, but the ones that the greater community is interested in seeing and asking us to look for. We need to have them on the horizon, right?
I agree. I think you need some creative folks on the team for that.
An example, a great example is what's happening at the school right now. So when Laura, like, the Laura, I'm sorry, the, the Laura grant, grant came through, I had no idea that the school needed a lot of exterior work to that building. Now, obviously, it's a town building, you know, within the scope of what, where that would work. The town, the, the school typically only looks for grants that are educational-based. So had we, had I known that there was a exterior issue there, those funds might have been appropriated differently. And, and that would have absolutely been in the scope of, of the grant that we applied for, right? So I think it's the communication, having that networking, figuring out what, what the town wants. Because in my perspective, again, I feel like a lot of the times is that these grants get put together and then they go to a town meeting for an approval. And it's just like, well, who decided on this? And, and how long ago was this talked about? And why are you dictating where we're, we're not spending money based off of, you know, funds that were then all of a sudden available? You know, instead of kind of strategically putting it in place of saying, like, we've heard you and now these things are coming up and here's a really great grant that fits that. And being able, even if it's in pieces, to say like, you know what, we're going to do with part one and when the next one comes through, we're going to finish it with part two. You know, and kind of really start thinking strategically and fight your plans instead of, you know, money comes in and where, where do we put it? What can we pay? Right.
I started making lists of all the different ways we could organize or identify things. And this is, this is just getting almost impossible. I was trying to make tables and it was not working. And think, all right, you're trying to organize something that's a little more organic than, can be particularly not, not even regimented, just put in tables. And, yeah, we can start with that mission and, and look at, that was just, is that from what you had originally drafted?
Yeah, so this, this, this part right here came from, I looked up the other, other folks were kind of moving. And I just threw Bethany in there to have a starter, but it's, it's very kind of general, the mission statement.
It's very lofty.
Correct. It's a very general, you know, seal with it what you want, you know, kind of tweak it, do whatever, take it out, adapt it, do whatever you want. It was just kind of a starting place for discussion.
I really, really, I see these, those goals as being where we need to start and they're awesome.
The goals are great, yeah.
And I, I don't disagree with the values, but I just see us as having to get, kind of get our, our hands dirty with the identifying grants and promoting. And getting people to, just to think about it and want to participate ahead of time instead of just saying, well, where did this grant come from? It's just popped up, literally popped up on the internet and there we are and we're asking, it'll let us do it, you know. But how, how do we, shall we do this? If we all like these goals?
I like the goal a lot.
Okay, so, all right.
I didn't understand the relationship with grantees. That was something that I underlined, but
Which one?
The, the third bullet, oh. Example of what that means so that I could understand some context.
They're organizations. Like, if we're applying for, for grants, I was thinking about all the different beneficiaries. Like, we might be, well, we actually do apply to deep for grants. And there are some of the, the things.
I was saying those would be the grantors, not the grantees.
No, the grantees are the ones that give the money, right?
It's, it's opposite of when you, it's like, when you, when you do mortgages, it's, it's opposite.
But it would be good if we could be the middleman between some of these. But it would be good if we could be the middleman between some of these, some organizations and.
So Hutter Deep would be an example of the grantees.
Yes, yes.
Okay, okay.
So one of the things too, if you're looking at the goals and reaching out and trying to figure out how to make this more. Um, I guess effective, another great example of this, you guys, I'm not sure how many of you are aware. There was like a brownfield, uh, grant a little while ago that, um, I believe it was sustainable, Bethany.
Well, it was economic development.
Economic development, yes. They know, Bethany, they were trying to do a project and they had kind of a scope on a grant. But they didn't realize, there was, there's no real process, right? So they didn't realize that they had to go to the town first, and that they were trying to do things themselves, but then. And ultimately, it was a lot of running around. I was on the phone with, with EPA and all kinds of whatever, trying to get, get approvals and. Ultimately, we couldn't do it because by the time we found out about town, there wasn't much that we could do, right? Cause the deadline was passing and all the things, and it wasn't fitting the bill because there were other issues along with it.
Two days to do all that work.
Right, and they had done a ton of work prior to that, but they didn't know where to go, and they didn't know like who to send it to, they didn't know who the proper person was, they didn't. So it was kind of like this, having a committee, it allows people to say, hey, I've got this really great idea. I wanna submit it, so I'm not sure like how this committee would like to put that out to the public. But I think that you would see that there's a lot of people who are interested in things. Um, like, for example, like I just had a conversation with another EDC that they wanted to do a small micro grant that I had, and that got submitted. Um, we'll see what happens, but just so happened that I had a conversation with, with Sharon, and I was like, I've got this grant, and it was like, oh, wait, we've got an idea. So it would be nice if we could have more of a, hey, I have a thought for the community. And where does that go and what process does that look like?
Well, I mean, I think the first step is to set up a great committee, right? Like, who are those people?
How we, how, how, is that what we wanna accomplish today, maybe?
Yeah, how many people are you thinking should be on the committee?
Well, that's, maybe we should get, try to get public input on that, because. It, I think it, it, there's a combination of where do you want, what part of the community do we want to draw from? Do we, how, how much representation do we think we need? I mean, is one person enough? Do we think we need two? Um, do we think all the, all the town departments should be involved? Do we think all the local organizations should be involved? The thing is that, to get beyond what our current reach is, which is generally internal town infrastructure. We have to go out to the rest of the community and get their input. I don't know how to do that. I mean, I think a lot of.
Economic development?
There is.
So I think someone from the economic development would be appropriate.
And then looking for someone who might, or people who have grant writing experience. You know, there could be people in the community that, you know, did that.
There's someone online that fits that bill.
That could then, you know. Because I don't think you want. I don't think you just want to get warm bodies in there, because then I think you have. You don't have any expertise and you're gonna really start from scratch.
I was really hoping that we would have a lot of people, the people who speak up at the town meetings and say, why didn't you ask us? What we wanted, this is okay, but we've got other things that we want. I, I wish that some of those people had been on here tonight, just to say. I have an idea, I would like to see this, um, maybe we should have one of these meetings. Where people can, we can ask again, or ask more clearly for public input as to. Who should participate or.
Liz had put in the chat though, um, cause she was, she was, well, she was, she was, we, during COVID. It was during COVID, there was this attempt with, I believe it was Dawn, myself, Leslie, you, you. I think there may have been one other person on there. Malone, I think, I think Malone, I think she was on it. Anyway, there was, there was, there was a group of people that were trying to do some sort of grant committee at the time. Um, and then it kind of filtered away, and I'm not sure, so I, I think it, it might sound like she's interested. But I think what the process is, is we need multiple people who know something a little about it, right? Like, there needs to be a piece of each one, so when they come to the table, I think that was the other issue, is that when you come to the table, everybody knows what they know. Right? So when I talked to, to Dawn, right, he's really great at the project management piece. But, but he doesn't understand necessarily the finance aspect or the administrative act, uh, aspect, or. You know, when things get too large, like, you know, where all those other pieces go. Um, and so what's hap- happening currently right now, it's those other pieces kind of follow me to figure out. Um, and so it would be nice to have people at the table that understand, um, like the dynamic of a project, right? From start to finish, of understanding how that works, understanding some of the, like, the, the legal parts of it, understanding some of the labor laws part of it. You know, if we can find some of the.
Or are you, are you asking for the, for potentially people to be active participants? Or advisory?
It would be part of the setup, so like, for example, when you're setting up some of these grants, there, you know, you have the data saving law, right? And so if you're, if you're commingling funds, you know, then, then it changes the, the dynamic of which you can use the money. And so a lot of the times we go for these grants, and after we're like, okay, we'll figure that part out. And, and you ca- you can't, you can't go into a grant that way. And so it would be nice to have someone around the table that when they're reading a, they're reading an application and they go, wait a minute. Like, I understand you wanna use that for this, but you've already used funds for, you know, X, Y, and Z, you now can't use this grant for this. Because it's, it's gonna be a conflict of interest, or you would have to, now have to have a sign. That's, you know, eleven by whatever feet out front, show, yeah, showing like where the funds came from and all the things. So there's pieces that pop out depending on how you're using them, and every grant is different, so it would be nice to have somebody that understands some of those. Legal pieces, you know, somebody that's a creative writer, somebody who, you know, has written grants before. And, and understands the grant committee, you know, like I know Liz has been, sorry, as we're talking about you. Um, was sitting at committees and actually deciding who gets, you know, the money and why they're deciding, the way they're deciding, it helps us how we write our grants. And then obviously the financial piece, you need somebody at the table that understands, you know, how we're gonna get the money, where we're gonna get the money.
So I think we should advertise this. And, and how, like, in all our normal channels, but also any other creative channels we could think of. That, and I think the grant committee is something that should meet on a regular basis, and they should have like a regular agenda.
And it might not even be our committee, you know.
I agree, I don't think it should be.
I don't need more meetings.
I don't think it's our responsibility to run, but, um. It's my opinion, like.
No, I agree with you. Maybe what, what we should do is put together a couple of, of paragraphs. And schedule another virtual meeting. Maybe a month from now and say, we're looking for public input on how to put together a grant committee. Who, is that the same thing as who might be interested in serving on it? What are, what are our?
I think we should. It, it's just not gonna happen if we don't do it, you know, right? I think we need to form the committee and then wish them well, you know, and then.
I, I was going to say, so we may need to have it as a subset of the Board of Finance initially. To get it, to make sure it gets going, and then launch it from there. You know, like solo launching it from there. But we may need to have it as a subset working group. Then, you know, form it as a formal committee at a later point. But if we want it to, it to get moving, I think we need to be the force behind it.
I agree with that, yeah.
And what kind of training is out there? In grant writing or grant research or whatever that we can. You know, because there might be somebody who's interested, but maybe doesn't have background, but would be more than willing to. Take the course or, or courses or whatever to bring themselves up to speed. That could be helpful, but if there's no training out there and then you're kind of like.
It, it's as much as you wanna do with it, right? Like, so if you're, if you're interested in just kind of reading about it, I would almost say. You know, there's, there's a couple very inexpensive, uh, colla- classes that you can take that give you like, you know, Grant One O One. Um, and then there's more in-depth how to write grants, and then, and you can get a whole degree in it if you want. Um, but there are, there are some inexpensive, like.
Are there some that we can sponsor for people?
I can look at it, I can look at it. There, there's different ones, I think it depends on what the committee is going to choose to do, right? How in-depth is it? Like, how much do you need to know in order to do all the pieces? Right? Like, I don't, if you're, if you're not gonna be part of the actual administrative process, I don't know if you necessarily need all of those pieces. But you for sure need somebody at the table that understands the legalities, right? So they don't have to necessarily know how to write a grant, they have to understand that prevailing wages. And, you know, if, if you see certain terminologies within your grant application, that triggers, you know, your next steps.
Or maybe we could say the grant committee is responsible to identify projects, scope them out, and, you know, like prioritize them. Get approval from the, um, or, you know, present them to selectmen for, um, you know, town meetings. But then also to submit the application, like, some, you know, they, we could.
But finance has to be involved, I'm, I'm not thrilled about the. We do, but we do, cause we have to figure out what, how to handle the money and.
And the cash, like literally the cash, you know.
The grants require all the ACH to be set up prior to. Yeah, so when you're building it out, you have to handle the financial piece.
They're going to have to present for the selectmen to get the project approved, but like. So I, I envision us putting out an advert, identifying the amount of people we want and the skill sets that we're looking for. And like an honest assessment of like what the town commitment is, cause we're also looking for people who have community focus, right? And those might be those organizations, you know, we talked quite a bit about, you know, economics, social wellbeing. So there's groups that we might want to include for that, but then also economic, the. And then we need some people who are like grant writers, you know, like who have that skill set too, so.
Yeah, this committee needs worker bees.
It needs worker bees.
These not just.
Not idea guys.
But people need, they need to maybe have some skills to help with implementation, just in terms of getting the process.
And I think, I think what Katie said is right, I think putting something out there and finding what interest we have. And what kind of skill level we get response to, you know, is going to help us. Because if you put it out there and you get nobody, then. You know, we're gonna have to come up with a plan B.
Or you get people that have no background and they're just.
This sounds like fun, but. No, I can't meet every week, or I can't meet every other week, or, you know, I can come every six months, or.
Or I just wanna tell you what I want.
And people who might be willing. To put in the town, I'm in the work and have some knowledge.
So who would you like that to go to? I guess first of all, there's an interest, who, who wants to collect that? I am finally collecting, you can collect it.
I think, I think, I think all interested individuals should respond to the finance email.
Finance or, or should we create one, or is that not a good idea for this?
For right now, let's send it to the finance email. I mean, I have access to it. It's not, it, it's, it's a permanent email for the town, it's not one that, you know, changes when personnel changes. Just the owner, just the readability of it changes. Okay, well, no, I mean, so i- it's tied to my email right now, so I see it, but when, but. The content of the finance email does not get lost when the finance director changes, is where I'm going.
Yeah, okay, and it could all go on the shared point, drive, right? I mean, things could be corrected and posted. Or archived or whatever. One thing that I'm thinking is that maybe if, Jen, you said that you could look into. Possible training and cost of training things, do we, do we want to know what might be available? That we'd be willing to support, or before we do this, so that we can say, we can. The town will, is going to enable training for this, this, and this. Or maybe.
Is proposing. Consider training for serious candy or something like that. Yeah, I think, I mean, as long as it's not like. A week in Vegas.
The finance. You know, we, the Board of Finance has to go to Vegas to.
How many people are you thinking to start? I mean, I get, it's, it's up to interest, but I mean, up to how many? Cause I know that any of the committees, it's always up to a certain number, or we're not, we're not making motions, we're not building all.
The chairperson, the vice chairperson, the secretary and the treasurer, that's four right there.
That, this is all, this is all like a, a template. If you wanted to do like a formal commission, then you would have to do this. If you wanted to do a committee, you don't necessarily have to have all of those things, right?
An advisory, wanting to see how, how it goes, and then perhaps that committee can actually help and say. With designing the next version of it, the next iteration. Like, because our problem is we don't know what we don't know. So it's really hard to say, please come join us in this project where we don't know what we don't know.
I think it could have to, a, a, a committee that does make mo- make motions.
Oh, I think it, it should end up.
Yeah, that would be, that would be ideal, so it can start with an advisory committee, I like your idea there. I ha- I have something I wanna slip by you, and it's been on my mind for a while, and it might be applicable in this context, like. Um, I think it's just something we might need to think about, um, like, is there. And Liz touched on this too, you know, you're talking about, I, you know, having like a, an assistant or something like. Is there any way to make like a, a revenue creating position where someone basically works commission? Uh, you know, trying to bring in grants, and, and the theory is that they would be paying their own salary. With the amount of grants they bring in, you know, and so.
Most grant writers will be commissioned if they're worth anything, because your, your basics is saying determine it upon some unknown source, some of them.
I get what you're saying.
The justification of the position is.
And I didn't personally look at this, but it was somebody I was speaking to that we were talking about this situation and. Um, prospect maybe looking for a grant writer themselves, and are looking for a part-time, and it's a lot easier to find. Someone that's full-time, and so they were looking to possibly split with us, a grant writer. Um, but then you come with who pays the insurance and who pays all of the full-time.
Positions before them, like, for example, our finance director.
Oh, no, he was part-time here.
Oh, it was a part-time, part-time thing, okay.
Yeah, and he was part-time in Beacon Falls.
It's only because if you're looking for certain grants, right, you now have somebody that's like, that's. Invested in just the municipal aspect of it, that work, cause the problem is too, a lot of grants are, though we're not for profit. The municipal end of it cuts us off because we get other types of funding. Um, so you, when you're looking through, all of a sudden you're like, ooh, this is a good one, and then you're like, oh, yeah, no, not us, you know? But we're not for profit, so it pops, but it, but then it's not applicable, so it might be nice to have somebody that's looking for both areas.
Wait, so if, if we, when, if we shared with, with prospect, I'm just thinking we might be looking at the same grant pools.
You may, except for the projects differ, right? And so some of them are, you know, you, you, if, and again, this goes back to shovel already. If we actually, and I guess it's more of a strategic committee too, is like pulling from other people of like, what is it that the town's looking to do? You know, what types of projects are we looking to fulfill in the next five, ten years? You know, and then having that available, so that way you can say, hey, listen, here's the projects that we already have in our capital, if something pops up now, great, let's hit those up. If it's not, here's our five-year plan, so as these grants trickle in, this is what we're looking for. And so while they're searching, they're not only searching for ours, they're searching for, you know, whoever, whether it's prospect, it's prospect, but we're. You know, it's somebody who's vested in just the municipal.
Just learning that, and that set of skills, absolutely.
And for more information, a grant writer, do they actually go and look for grants too, or do they just write them off?
No, they normally, they normally research them.
They're responsible for finding.
For finding it, that's what I, Grant Finder. I just wanted to make sure I understood that there was responsibility of the job, okay? I just wanted to make sure I understood that there was responsibility of the job, okay?
And I, I don't know, I'm not sure how. How many different things we want to ask people to deal with, I mean, it, it's so complex that. I'd like to see us be able to make it. At least for the first part of the committee or the, or whatever, the first population of the committee, make it. Relatively easy, but their job would sort of be to figure out what. The greater committee would be. Yeah, to do, to do fact-finding and, uh, and research into. I don't know what. There's just so much.
So in essence, the, the board of finance will task them to develop a structure, develop a rhythm and. To make, make recommendations.
It's based on who those people are, you know, they could say, we need somebody with legal, we need somebody, you know, with. Financial background, we need somebody with legal.
So the first thing they do is find a grant that will pay for a grant writer and a grant administrator.
Well, that would be great.
Wouldn't that be ideal?
But who would write that grant, right?
But that's what, that's what we're looking at, like, we look at even with these infrastructure grants, what we find is that, um. They want us to have them, they want us to have them approved, but the town wants, there was the money come from. You know, it, it like goes around and around and around, and I just have a. My sense is that larger municipalities have all these things, of course, they have large. Capital funds that are just approved, that they can just use, and so they don't have to. Go through what we do, where each one is, is approved in the town meeting. But I like the whole thing about everything going to the town meeting, I really do. I like the town meeting to know what we're doing. That, that's just going in another direction, however, but part of what would happen is everything. Not everything, but a lot of things would have to happen really quickly. Where if you identify a grant, you've gotta get everything done quickly and most of them would have to go through a town meeting. You know, and all of a sudden.
Can we conditionally?
I was gonna say, can we pre-approve?
What we've done right now is we've applied for grants without going to the town meeting, but we can't sign for the contract. Until the town approves it. So if the grant was like, you know, hey, you have a weekend to do it, obviously, that's not something that we can go to a town meeting for. So we've applied for them without going to a town meeting, but we don't sign any contract getting into a grant. Until it goes through the proper.
If we had a five-year plan.
For grants?
You know, then at the town meeting, the annual town meeting, or whatever meeting, we approve. These grant projects, because there are grant projects, they're not any money per se, you know? Or they're twenty percent, or whatever it is, but if that is at a town meeting and gets approved ahead of time. Then we're not in that situation.
And then like Round Hill Road. Like Round Hill Road, which did not get approved, and we didn't want the, we said we want to approve, apply for the grant.
Yeah, so, but I mean, this, you know, could take some of that out if, if.
But that's exactly the process you're talking about.
So what happened with Round Hill Road, I'm sorry.
Round Hill Road was on the capital plan and the capital plan was approved. And then it was, then it was removed from funding this year. Because the deal was, we were going to, we were going to apply for the grant, and if we didn't get the grant.
We weren't gonna do it.
But it still has to be part of the capital plan in order to. To apply for the grant. So that's the.
So we didn't get it because it wasn't on the capital plan?
We couldn't apply for it because it wasn't approved.
So that's what, that's, that, so that's one of the things that we have to be very careful with. Me, yes, create a true capital plan. And ident- and know upfront that all projects on this capital plan would be subject to grant application. And the funding and the burden on taxes could be reduced anywhere from fifty to eighty percent.
That's just ridiculous.
But we would have, everything would have to be quantified. Correct, to, to do it on a five-year plan. We can do a five-year plan of, we'd like to do this and this and this and this, but we can't put dollar amounts on it. Because we won't have those dollars.
Oh, can you approve, and I, and this is me being naive.
And we're getting into our finance weeds now.
Yeah, but can you, can you approve a project through the town saying, hey, it could be between this dollar amount and this dollar amount, but not exceeding? You know, but we wanna have it there because obviously it's a need, and we're all agreeing as a town that it's a need. Can we approve it up to a dollar amount? And then at least have it there in case, you know, then, then you can update it per year when the budget comes out and say, hey, listen, we didn't have any grants this year. You know, blah, 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 we wanna move it on to the next year, but now, you know, with inflation, it's up to this amount, you know, and that way you can keep it on the books. For something happens, so then it's already like pre-approved.
But the only one we've ever tried to do that with was Round Hill Road.
So thanks for clarification on the Round Hill Road, so when we went to apply, so we took it out of the capital plan, right?
We were gonna use capital reserve, aren't we? I- if we didn't get the grant.
Yep.
So it wasn't gonna cost the taxpayers anything. It was in the budget, but not in the appropriation. There were a bunch of capital reserve things.
But I thought it wasn't, I thought we didn't have enough in our capital reserves to pay for that.
No, we did.
That's why it was in there.
The concept, I think, is a, is a good one. Uh, I don't know how. We, how we do it, and maybe that's our, our weeds, to figure out how to do this.
The accountants help us?
The auditors. Help us in.
How, how you would set it up, what, you know, uh, the best way to, I mean, they have to run into it.
I can run it by Michelle for starters.
We have some resources, but they're not unlimited, especially because we're switching auditors this year, so. Asking, I don't know how much we can ask them for, although they've been doing a lot of work. Will they finish now until the end of next year? It's the end of next year, right?
I keep, no, they're not, they're not, the, the twenty-four audit is not finished. All the pre- the preliminary work is finished, but not the actual audit itself. There's still work to be done, but.
But they told us.
They are helping us. Develop some best practices.
So yes, we probably can, can figure out, but, um. So maybe we, we, the board of finance, ask this committee to try to identify. Short, medium and long-term product, projects that. That if they were, um, if grants became available. They would like to do, they would like to see go on the budget. Uh, I don't, I don't know how we do that. We'd have to talk to the auditors about exactly how, how we could do that. Because.
The wording and everything.
Well, it's, I'm not sure at, at what point we can help people. Other than that things are in the five-year capital plan, because we don't ever appropriate for them until. Until the next year, so I don't know how this would be different. Than what we're doing, like we identified what years the, the, the fire trucks have to have there.
There's gotta be a subset of like. I, otherwise it's gonna like flood the capital plan.
Well, we could, uh, uh, just put what we've got asterisks and little. A whole bunch of little thingies that identify grant related stuff already. Uh, we could do it, and they could just be in the capital plan, but we would have to. Uh, we'd have to go back. We'd have to ask the town eventually to approve. Actually applying for grants or spending the money, one way or the other, I mean, if things are need. You know, there's a difference between needs and wants and. I don't know, we're always trying to figure them out, so.
So this is what I'm thinking. Uh, we're looking for to sort of set up and support, um. A advisory grant committee or something like that, that's gonna identify projects for meeting in long. That'll identify the benefits and the community mood, and like briefly scope them out.
Yeah, maybe solicit, uh, input, let, the, let this committee.
Solicit community.
Community.
That's a really good one.
Input.
And then, um, scope out the projects in terms of schedule, cost, search for grants to fill those needs, like.
Yes, try to identify them.
Identify, um, uh, and then also, you know, write up the grants as appropriate. And then we can look, write down the skills that we're looking forward to, for this sort of advert, you know, we were saying. Grant writing, project management, economic development would be.
Very helpful. Uh, we don't wanna say that you have to have these skills already, I mean, we, you, the whole thing about training. We might be able to support training, Martha had a good phrase for that. Do you remember? You like me and you forget it after you say it.
That, just the initial fact-finding you mean?
No, the initial training. There was something about.
We may be able to, you know.
Oh, oh, I know what, I have to think, what did I say?
You remember what it was?
Yes.
I, as you guys are talking, I'm just sitting here thinking, you know, I have. Say hi, like, to my people, but, um, Renata and Juliette Huskrog, they actually do grant trainings. I mean, I have their videos from prior to and some of their, their slide decks. But I'm almost wondering if we have a group of people that are interested and wondering if even they would come down. Probably for a small fee, cause they're still consultants, to come down and do an individual like group training. And just do that as far as what our needs are, because that's what they do is grant, so they can kind of identify. Well, that's what they do, that's right, and so she's actually one of, one of them, is one who's been trying to navigate HUD with me, cause they do HUD grants. Um, and so she was, she was even laughing too, cause she was like.
You know. In our free time, um, but that would be awesome to find out if.
Let me see if they're willing to come down, once we have a group, obviously, but let's see if they're willing to come down, and then that way. The whole group can meet, they can do a training based off the needs that we're looking to do, and then they can build from there.
So we can get interested people to maybe attend that, and then maybe someone might say, oh, that's too much of a commitment, or. It's over my head, and, and then we can move from there.
I agree with you, I'd rather have as many people who might be interested as possible. Be part of that so that they, so that they can decide whether they actually do wanna participate or not.
And, you know, we could go over time commitment and all of that.
Yeah, I have a feeling that this is a major time commitment, no matter what. Um, especially to get it off the ground, so. Anything else you think we need to do tonight?
How are we gonna advertise it, like if I thought?
Um, I would say, hmm, there's, the town has a Facebook page, the town has a webpage. And there's a bulletin.
I'm gonna put a, um, I'll put it, I can put it on the front of our website as well, um, but also, I mean, if any, this is helpful. Just because of the way the algorithm, algorithm is, if anybody has Instagram or Facebook or anything like that. Once we, once I put together like the verbiage of what that looks like, if you could also share it. Um, especially if you have in-town people that you have, it helps boost who's gonna see it.
Do you wanna, um?
I'll post it on the main page and we can share it from the main page, and that way it's the same thing, um, and then all the emails will filter back too. And if you don't wanna do that, you can always go to the town courts too, cause that, and all three of them navigate that too. So whatever, if you feel like it's gonna be too cumbersome, we can help, um, they could have it too, and that's a neutral space.
What we have out there is three people.
First volunteers, they didn't know that once you. Would you mind sending me what you're gonna write, so I can proofread the solicitation?
Of course, yeah, yeah, I'll definitely send it to, to like this body, and then, um, and then any tweaks and then we can.
Can I suggest, cause you were taking better notes than the rest of this? I wrote down two sentences, send hers, cause she had some really good, um.
I'll, I'll cover it next.
Okay, and, uh. I think we probably done, done as much as we can, don't you think?
I think we have like formulated a plan of, of what we're thinking, you know, well in agreement of, of what we want.
And that's really all we can do at this point.
Right, right.
The purpose of tonight was to stop talking about it and hunting it and start doing, and I think we did that. I think we did that.
Yes, okay.
Let me thank you guys, cause I know that this isn't necessarily your room, so I appreciate.
Yeah, we should, we should all just, we should all, and, um, John and Lars, we should all be doing that. And we should actually be making it available to, uh, should other departments and, um, boards and commissions? Or is that another?
I think other boards and commissions, I don't know, I think one person from the town hall can speak on behalf. Of all of the town hall stuff, do you know what I mean, like?
No, I don't mean on, on the committee, I mean that for, for the training, initial, hold the training.
Well, I think. For sure, it's recorded, first of all, you can make it available to any of them. But I, I mean, there are certain boards and commissions, I think, that are a little bit more involved in, in looking for additional funding. Than others. So I think maybe those that are very vested right now in trying to find additional funds, would maybe a representative be here? In case they have specific questions that are geared towards their commission, but.
I'm not wearing two hats, not for that. There needs to be somebody else from economic. Okay, so, um, but you're gonna run it around to all of us and we'll, we'll try to.
And then I'll chat to Renata and Juliette too, and if they can do that, if they can't, plan B is to see if there's trainings available and see which ones I can get at the. Most conservative cost.
Okay, what about CCM?
CCM's an option, I just, I don't have the network that I have, that I do.
Was on the regional planning commission for twenty-six years. Amazing, I mean, the people there do good work. Anyway, um, all right, so we are. So we're going to be done for tonight, um, we haven't made any motions. Except we might wanna think about, well, we have a meeting next week, so by, by Tuesday. Can we throw this on the agenda? Um, we can put it under your or under me, either one.
Just for an update.
Or even, well, yeah, and for us as a, as a board, maybe to approve what's going, going to be advertised. You know, because then it's, it becomes an official board action.
Yeah, and especially if the board is going to own it initially.
That's scary, but. What can I say?
Another option would be to delegate someone from this board to sort of oversee that, or like two people. You know what I mean, is the whole board.
Oh, yeah, I think.
You, do you know what I'm saying, like?
It'd be like a working subgroup with a dedicated.
Yeah, it would be really nice if, I know we've got a lot of commitments right now, if we could get Lars to participate there, because he's.
Familiar with that.
He does a lot of, of grant, he's always gotten grants that he's getting for the farm and. There's something he goes to once a year about a workshop. Oh, so the other thing. oh, so the other thing that I'd like to do as, in addition to formally sending it out, is maybe set another special meeting, or just, should we decide at our regular meeting what our next steps?
Try and decide at our regular meeting, and if we can't, and need more time, then we can set up another special.
Another, yeah, okay, all right, um, since that's the consensus. All right, then a motion?
A motion.
To turn, send it, okay, and all in favor? All right, and thank you, everyone.
Thank you for the so much.